Thank you. Let's call our meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda, item B, Sunset Park Elementary School year-round calendar, Appendix B. Dr. Markley.
All right, I'm going to ask our Principal of the Year to come to the podium, and she's going to give this presentation, but a little background. We have two year-round schools that are choice schools, and I've had requests from various folks over the years, why don't we have a, why don't we have more year-round schools? And my general philosophy has been that that's a, that has to really be a well-thought-out community decision. And I've always thrown out the benchmark of 80/80. Eighty percent of the existing staff, eighty percent of the existing community needs to have a favorable opinion of doing a year-round school. And Ms. Jethro has probably been further along in this process than any of my principals, so I'm going to let, turn this over to her. She'll talk a little bit about the rationale. She'll talk a little bit about how she's gotten the input. And I've also told anybody who does this, with the exception of Lake Forest, which we'll get to next, that if you do this, it's a one-year planning process after the board approves. This is an informational presentation, not an action item tonight. It would have returned next month as an action item if the board wants us to consider that. Ms. Jethro?
Thank you very much. Yes, as Dr. Markley said, this was a question that I asked him about two years ago, when I started out as the Principal of Sunset Park. How can we go year-round? What's the possibility of that? And so, we've been working on this all along. But our request is for Sunset Park to change from a traditional to a year-round calendar for the 2015-16 school year. And so, we have that time to plan and do this well, and really do it right. I included for you, just so you would have it, and I would not go into it, some demographic information from my school. And I compiled this last year when Dr. Markley asked Sunset to host his Equity Advisory Committee, and this was some information that we shared. But I think it's just a good picture of the demographic and the high-needs population, and also the increase in enrollment that we've seen steadily since I've been the principal, which trickles down and increases the class size. But the proposal is for the pretty standard 45-15 model with the extra week of half-day remediation for kindergarten through fifth-grade students who need that academic intervention at the end of the nine weeks. Currently, we do have some after-school tutoring for third, fourth, and fifth-grade students, but kindergarten first and second is not eligible to attend that. So, this plan would benefit them as well. And then, the benefit of doing it at the end of the nine weeks, when that assessment data is fresh, when we can intervene for the children. Right now, again, we offer that through after-school tutoring, but while the tutoring's going on in the afternoon, the very next day, the new instruction is continuing. So, this would kind of be a stop-gap-check situation. Some of the background information from this, and some of what we've looked at, is at Sunset Park, we really have looked at what we call our summer slide data. And this is where we look at where the children end a school year, and then we remeasure them again immediately when they come back in at the beginning of the year. And we see huge gaps when they come back. Ground that we had gained is now lost. We don't see that as much over spring break, or over a winter holiday, or a Christmas holiday. But that length of time in the summer, we very definitely see that. And that's part of the reason why this balanced calendar or year-round schedule, we feel like would be beneficial. We have students that regress anywhere from one to five reading levels over the summer before they return to school. And that's a huge loss of instructional time at the beginning of the year for us to gain back what was lost.
Ms. Jethro?
Yes.
Can I stop you here?
Sure.
I've always been a proponent of year-round schools. Both my children attend Eaton Elementary. But I looked at your data, and it's compelling data, but it's somewhat surprising. I've always been told that there is no summer slide, you know, associated, and so, there's no benefit to year-round, the year-round calendar, which really isn't year-round. It's just six weeks on, three weeks off. But I've always been told there's no instructional benefit. I wonder, and I guess for LaShawn as well, have we looked at this in the rest of our schools? Or is this the only data we have?
In terms of analyzing that data for our current year-rounds, or for our other schools?
For our traditional schools, to see if there really is a, you know, uniform summer slide, or if it's something specific, the Sunset Park, or specific, the Title I schools, or, I mean, is there something, you know, it would be amazing to not have this kind of slide of several levels of reading-
Right.
-just by changing an instructional calendar.
Yeah. And what I would offer you is that our principals do that, but we have not done that formally as a district, no.
And the best-known national study is a John Hopkins study that looked at summer slide, specifically at a lot of, at low-income and high-poverty schools.
But did it confirm this data?
The John Hopkins study was one on summer slide, and I'll get you a copy of that.
I'd like to see that too, because the data I saw was that anything less than five weeks, that there was no significant. But after you went past five weeks, it didn't make any difference whether it was five weeks or 12 weeks. And I'd note, you know, one of the things about year-round school is there's still a six-week summer break. And so, if that five-week window is correct, then it would seem that the wiser choice would be 45 days on, 20 days off, because you'd stay under that five-week period, and you would not have those, that huge six-week break in the summer, which is where they say that slide does really come into play.
Try to get that past the tourism lobby.
Say what?
Try to get that past the tourism lobby.
Well, I'm just saying, no, that's the data that I have read, that it's that, once you get past five weeks, there's not a great deal of difference between five, six weeks, I mean, six weeks and 12 weeks. But go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay. And Dr. Hickey, I do know what you're talking about, because I've done a lot of reading about this over the time too. And there is so much research, and a lot of the research says different things. And it's hard to find that one compelling argument that just says, this is the way it is. One of the things I read is that because there are so many different models of year-round, there's 45-15, and there's 50-10, and there's so many different ones. And then, schools are also different. Every school is so different, that it's hard to really follow that thread of research that says, this is exactly the way that you do it. But we have found this to be true at Sunset with the summer slide data. And that's even what, and I'm getting into some other stuff, but the Harvard Reads research that's being done right now with the Title I schools, that's one of the things that they're looking at, is that slide in the summer, and especially for the students that may not have that exposure to the literature and the other activities in the summertime. And I agree with you also, Mr. Higgins, that it does still give that length of time in the summer, that longer look at. One of the things that I talked with Ms. Jackson about from federal Title I programs is that we would still host fast start during that time, what would kind of still be our summer, so we could still bring students back for that two weeks of instruction.
That raises one other, and I hate, I'm not trying to break up your train of thought.
It's okay. I feel like I'm taking all of your time, so.
Well, you know, I note that one of your proposals is one-week-half-day remediation. And I think that that would be wonderful. My question is, first off, is that going to be mandatory? And, you know, would we provide transport, I guess we would provide transportation. So, I mean, so, how do we compensate teachers for coming that half-day, in essence, what, four weeks in a year? So, that would be my first question, is about that.
Right. One of, in my conversation with Ms. Jackson, what we were looking at and talking about doing is trading the after-school tutoring program that we have, and in exchange for that, having these three weeks of the half-day weeks. So, currently, we pay, I pay four teachers to stay in the afternoon, two days a week after school. We have a bus for that. I have an after-school coordinator for that. So, looking at trying to keep that as tight as we possibly could, but exchange one for the other-
And would it be mandatory?
...just to use the resources more effectively.
Would it be mandatory?
I don't know the answer to about the mandatory.
Because if it's not, I don't know whether or not, you know, there's-
Right. Well, what I could say, I could say to that is that what I have found at Sunset Park is that I have more parents requesting and wanting the children to have that tutoring, have that remediation, have that extra time, than I have spots to give.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir. As far as the benefit to students, and I think we've kind of already covered this in that last question, but the research does, probably the one certain thing that I feel like I've gotten from the research, is that for low-income students, it does make an impact, and even more of an impact when paired with that extra week of remediation. We have done some work already, as I mentioned, at Sunset, and I've tried to take the hugest parent sampling that I possibly could. And I'll be honest with you guys, I don't often host events. I have about 470 students enrolled right now, and I don't often host events where I have a huge number of parents. So, I have done this by hook and by crook. I hosted a series of Title I nights at the beginning of the year, where I just concentrated on K-1, 2, 3, 4, 5, so I could give that individualized attention. We've hosted student-led conferences. We've had lots of events. I don't need to tell you about my school calendar, but what I've done is taken every opportunity that I've had parents come in my building to do this year-round presentation for them, because I wanted to survey them, but I wanted it to be honest, and I wanted it to be clean. I didn't want to ask them a question that they really didn't have the information about. So, I came up with a presentation with some visuals, and with the purpose and the rationale behind it, and I presented that every chance I have gotten, sometimes one-on-one with a parent in my office, in order to get their feedback. And it's been, it's been really positive. I think on one of the slides, just an 85% approval rating of the parents that I've been able to talk to. And their concern was, I guess the 85% is not, is not higher, their concern was obviously having children in a high school, in a middle school, or a high school, in an elementary school, and then being on different calendars. And their other concern would be the cooperation of the daycares. So, one of the other things that I have done, and I've done that two ways too, I've actually called some of the daycares that come to my school and pretended that I was a parent that had a child that was going to go year-round, so they wouldn't know it was me, because they know me, because I talk to them every day about the children that we share. So, I kind of posed as a parent, and called and asked them that question, and they were like, oh, yes ma'am, you know, we accommodate, because we're their money. Having students go to them is their money. And the other thing that I've done is meet specifically with the Brigade Boys and Girls Club, and they have actually provided, or agreed to, and they've already started on it, because at some point, if you ask for it, I wanted to have that to bring to you, to provide a model program for the year-round calendar for my students. We have a huge number of students that go to Brigade in the afternoon, and they can accommodate more. So, very definitely started that process as well. And I've talked with transportation, and with finance, and with everybody, and we would like our district to stay the same. So, in that respect, the transportation cost would stay the same. And as already mentioned, requesting to trade in the after-school tutoring in exchange for those other three weeks. So, thank you all very much.
Any other questions from the board? It's just an information item, but I know the year-round topic has certainly been well-discussed over the years at various places around the county. Any other questions?
This will be on next month as an agenda item, so if you have questions or information you'd like presented, please let me know, and I'll make sure I get it before the meeting.
Just so I can be clear, you have an 85% approval rating from parents for doing this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Because that's the key thing. I, if the parents don't support it, even though it may be a great idea, if the parents don't support it, it won't go.
I agree with you 100%. I'm definitely not in the business of alienating, because that's not going to help me at all.
I understand. Well, okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Generally, the biggest objection, the childcare, and like you said, the two different calendars, you know, for different siblings, and, but I think you've addressed some of that, like the Brigade Boys Club. Also, isn't it 98% of your staff was in favor?
Yes, sir.
Can you give us kind of a rough idea of how many, I mean, you said 85% of the parents that you talked to, but was it, you know, a fairly good percentage of the parents?
I would, I would tell you that out of my 470 families, I have probably managed to get to about 300 of them, over time, over time. I've been working on this for a while.
Do you feel that approval number will go up once you're able to kind of reassure them about the daycare situation, and-
I do, and you know-
...they have a chance to think about it?
A lot of times, they, parents don't want to take something serious until they know it's serious. The other thing that I found encouraging from the families that I talked to as well, is that the majority of the ones that were not interested in it were my older children, so the fourth and fifth grade children. And I think that's because they've been doing it this way so long. I got the most support, I got the most support from my kindergarten and first-grade parents that would like to see their children start out that way.
I think one of the biggest problems in year-round that I've seen over the years is that a lot of people just don't understand year-round. They think you're going to go to school every day, year-round.
And that's what my fifth graders used to say, no, I don't want to go 365 days.
And if you explain, well, still, you have 180 days, just while you break it up in your vacations and so forth. Okay, any other questions?
185.
185.
It's 185 now.
I'm excused, 185.
It's 46, I guess, instead of-
Now, I know that, I think the other two year-rounds offer enrichment as well. So, would you be offering that?
Thank you. I'm glad you mentioned that. I would like, in the beginning, for my focus to be on the remediation. That's really my purpose, is to help close that gap. However, when I talk to Brigade, that is something that they are willing to do.
Oh, that would be good.
So, that is, that they provide field trips, they provide lots of different activities, and guest speakers, and things coming in. So, they were taking more of the enrichment perspective, so that I could concentrate on the remediation.
Now, you mentioned you'd spoken with transportation. What about food services? Because I know that the after-school tutoring, they get snacks, but if it's a half-day, would they get breakfast or lunch?
Right now, when the children come for a half-day, we serve, we have to, we serve one meal. We do a, either/or, I think, a breakfast and a snack, or a snack and lunch.
I have a question for Dr. Markley.
Let's, let's-
Oh, I'm sorry.
-get the answer for this one first, please.
I thought she had it.
No, they were discussing lunch?
Lunch.
Lunch. Breakfast and lunch.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question for Dr. Markley. For parents who may not want to do this, will they be granted an option for an alternative school, or will they just be forced to go year-round?
It's a mandatory attendance zone-
That's what I mean, yeah.
But if there's a situation where it just cannot work for a particular parent, Gregory is a school that doesn't have its own attendance zone-
Right.
-but it is, it's an option for school, and we already run buses into the Gregory zone, so they could choose by simply open enrollment to go to Gregory.
Okay.
And it would be the logical school to pair with.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Jethro.
Thank you.
Item C, Lake Forest Academy Extended Year, Appendix W. Dr. Markley.
Lake Forest Academy is in a slightly different situation than Sunset Park, and when you, this comes up next month, we're asking for approval for next year. They're already providing mental health service in the summer, and we would like to extend their year, as opposed to necessarily going year-round per se, so that we could offer educational services as well to partner with that. So, I'll turn this over to Ms. Jackson for a little more explanation.
Good evening. I just want to thank everyone for having us here. My staff is here. They've been sitting here. I think they're all starving. They ate lunch at 11 o'clock this morning. So, if I can have my staff just give a wave, they're all here to support me.
Thank you.
And also to thank you, I don't think there's an alternative school in the state that gets more support than Lake Forest Academy, and we appreciate that. What, um-
See, you're saying nice things about the board.
I'm sorry?
You're saying nice things about the board.
Yes.
And we appreciate that. It's just like these poor classroom teachers, that it's rare, you know, when parents come in and say nice things, it's always appreciated. And I know the board as a whole, we certainly appreciate it, because we do try.
Yeah. I go to conferences, and they're like, your board supports that school? That's so awesome. So, we love it. We're here today to ask for a modified calendar. We already go to school well over 185 days. What we do is we provide day treatment to our students about 246 calendar days. And the way that's done is that we have a day treatment staff. So, if you can remember back to January 2007, Lake Forest opened, and we've grown to 66 students. We've served about 350 kids now. I wrote this, we've gotten a lot of kids in in the last month, and we have a small recidivism rate. But really, what we do is we focus on managing mental health symptoms with young children. Right now, we're proposing that we get, what we would like to do is get an extra 15 days of instruction in the school year, and go to 200 days of instruction. Now, I know that sounds crazy. I can't believe I got these people to agree to work 15 more days of school a year, but we would like to see that, because what we see is that our kids have missed a lot of school, and they just need that extra support. So, what we're asking is a modified calendar that's very similar to year-round, that we would go from, start in July, and every nine weeks we would have that five days of remediation, which for us would just be five extra days of school. So, throughout the school year, that would be 15 extra days. Right now, our children go to school over summer, over Christmas break, over spring break, and who's there is our day treatment staff, and they work on mental health symptoms that day. So, it's not really a change that much in calendar for our parents, but it is a change in how many instructional days we would be giving. We wanted to point out some of the benefits, just additional instruction. Our kids have missed so much school because of their mental health symptoms. They've been hospitalized, they've been in and out of different foster cares, which also disrupts school, and our, their attendance has been, has been poor. And in day treatment, what we would like to see is those more consistent treatment gains. The 10 weeks over the summer, it's very hard to maintain day treatment for 10 weeks. So, we would like to do, you know, nine weeks of school, or 10 weeks of school, two weeks of day treatment, and then about four weeks in the summer. So, one thing we looked at was kids that come to us, their attendance the year before they attend Lake Forest. And you can see that our kids right now, that are first through eighth grade, the year prior to coming to Lake Forest, they average 20 missed days of school. So, we're talking about kids that really need those extra days to help catch up. They're behind anyway. Their living circumstances sometimes are not great. There's been a lot of trauma and abuse in their lives, and we would like to be able to fill that gap with those extra 15 days. Here are some of the barriers. Of course, transportation would be 15 more days of transportation, which would be about $7,400. On non-school days, day treatment actually pays the transportation cost. So, days that are not school days, our contractor pays for the transportation. So, just adding the 15 days is about $7,400. It's the staff cost that's the most costly. It is about $54,000 to have our teachers and office staff, and everybody there, an extra 15 days for a school year. Child nutrition, right now, our feeding, they bring lunch to us from Williston. We would have to find a different school to bring lunch from. Talked to child nutrition, they said that would not be an issue at all. Parental resistance to the calendar, we don't really have that issue, because we've already, our year-round. But one thing that I would like to point out is that what we would like to do is request that our teachers that have young children be able to send their children to year-round school, since we will be on a very, similar to a year-round calendar. Right now, our benefit schools are both, are all traditional schools, so we would like for them to have the option to get their kids on the same calendar. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
What is the average length of time a student stays at Lake Forest?
You know, it really varies. We have kids that come in and stay two to three months, because it's been something very traumatic in their life that has really caused them to need some extra help. But then, we have kids that have been there 18 months. But our average would be about 12 months.
And the recidivism was 10%, I believe it was?
Yeah, we're right around 10% of the kids that are coming back. It seems like more, because we hear about the ones that come back, but-
And what timeframe would that be compared to the first time?
Most kids come back. We really see the recidivism from mid elementary school, that we see them back at the beginning of middle school. It's those hard transitions that change to middle school, where we see a lot of recidivism in the sixth grade.
And what kind of support do they get for that transition? Do we have someone from Lake Forest that visits the school that they're going to, or with the counselors working together? How does that work?
It's the counselors working together. I work really closely with the principals to make sure that when they leave Lake Forest, there's a really good plan in place. And just working with the classroom teachers, we have tried to have transition coordinators to go out, but what we've found is that working directly with the teachers, they're going to have contact with them every day, the counselors in those schools, the transitions go a lot better, because, you know, they're there every day, and can provide those accommodations.
Ms. Chairman, I was at Lake Forest yesterday, and I want to say that Ms. Jackson's doing an outstanding job there. I was very impressed. The surprise that I had was when she told me that, you know, all these people stood up back here. What, I think about nine of them are actually school employees, the rest of them are-
We have about, it's about even. We have 11 classroom teachers-
Okay.
...and some assistants and office staff. But actually, our day treatment company, LaCriss, employs 22 people in the building, so they actually outnumber us. So, that contract that we have with LaCriss, which is at no cost at all to the school system, employs a lot of people that really help support the children in those classrooms.
And it was very educational, because I remember when we started this program, and how it has, well, I guess migrated, or matured, or such. I mean, I, so, you know, if you haven't visited it lately, I would suggest that you go by and say hello.
Yes. Any other questions?
Well, I know it's been so successful, that I used to have parents call and wondering how they could get their children in.
They show up.
They just wanted to sign them there.
You wouldn't believe how many parents show up daily to say, can my child come here?
Well, we're fortunate that we can provide this service for these families.
Yes, it's great.
And that we have the support of the community, because that was sort of an uphill battle when we were proposing this. But all of you have proven it to be most effective, and thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate it. And to me, I kind of equate it to what was said earlier, as far as our arts program in our schools, we do a lot more. But that's fortunate, because we have a good relationship, and always have been, with our county commissioners, for example, because they do give us the extra funding that enables us to be able to do programs like this. And this sounds great, and would be a good addition to what's already taking place.
It really is a model program for the state. We have people that come from all around the state, at least once or twice a month, to visit the program, to see how they can get something like this going on in their district.
Have anybody from Colwell County? Well, that's who we copied.
No. No, they haven't been down.
To some extent.
Yeah, to some extent, yeah, we did modify it.
We did modify it.
And now, we lead the way. Or you lead the way.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to note that the cost pieces on this are included in the budget presentation you'll see later.
Good.
Thank you. Okay, item D, update on the 25% rule, Appendix C, Dr. Wellmers. We thank everyone for coming.
Thank you.
You don't have to leave.
They need to eat.
You should have ordered some pizzas.
We don't have enough. I thought it was me.
Not the first one.
No, it happens all the time.
They said 25%, and they left.
I didn't know if it was me, the 25% rule, or dinner. Probably a combination of the three. Thank you, Ms. Chairman, and I appreciate this opportunity. Where we are on the 25% rule, and I won't go through this in depth until we get to the latter parts of it, because you've already seen it, and this is for informational services, or information only, but there is a possibility, as the state moves through this process, that there will be other alternatives to this. And that's not a guarantee or anything certain, but there is a possibility. But because of the impact of what this law does, and what it requires us to do, we have to plan for it as if it's going straight through, because time-wise and number-wise, there's a lot of kind of cost to it. So, we're doing the planning to move this through. Now, I appreciate your all's stance on this, and we know that a lot of folks are talking to people to try to get this changed, but until that happens, we need to move through this as it stands. So, with that, I'll run through this very quickly. You've seen this before. The superintendent will recommend 25% of selected teachers. The board shall review the selected teachers recommended by the superintendent, and may accept or each recommended teacher, or choose an alternative teacher. Teachers must have been employed by the school system for three consecutive years prior to the beginning of this year.
Quick question. Is it 25% of eligible teachers in the district, or 25% from each school?
From eligible teachers in the district that we're dividing up into each school. And there's an important reason why we do that.
Okay.
And we've kind of gone through that before, but it is because the evaluation process, when we look at a total school, is not consistent among, between and among schools. So, you would have a- So you, you would have a school that would be a high, that would have more numbers than the twenty-five percent than another school. And that is unfortunately, one of the weaknesses of this entire process is the subjectivity of the evaluation process we currently have for teachers. If it were stronger, we can do something different, but it, it is not. They must be, teachers must be deemed effective by obtaining at least a proficient rating on standards one through five, which is sort of the baseline of what everybody has to do. It will be based on a rubric of what we're doing at each individual school, be determined by the individual teacher evaluations, the ones completed during the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year. Also, we will add into that principal input, which I'm going to describe in just a minute. The highest-forming teachers at school will be selected on the results of their evaluations. Teachers who have been placed on an improvement plan or have received a written reprimand during any of the past three years are automatically removed from the list. That is one of the criteria.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
When we say a written reprimand, meaning it goes to human resources?
That's correct.
That has not one that stayed within the school?
That's right. Dependent upon what it is, if it's a continuing pattern of behavior that the, that the principal is working on, there's been two reprimands, and it hasn't come to the personnel file yet at the school, we would look at that. But if there's a pattern, that's, that's going to end it. That'd be, that would be the criteria.
Thank you.
But it's just we based on the one year, the twelve, thirteen?
The evaluation, the, where we add up the evaluation scores would be based only on twelve, thirteen. But the looking at a negative evaluation or disciplinary action of some sort would be back three years.
Yeah, but my point was, what I'm thinking is that with the one year, the twelve, thirteen, and looking at the proficient in, in those areas on that one year, I, I thought it was going to be more years than that because sometimes, you know, you're, you're teaching a certain grade level, then all of a sudden you're teaching a different grade level or, or some different subjects, whatever. And that could have affected that evaluation that year, whereas prior to that, you know, maybe it's something new, or, you see, you see what I'm saying?
No, I agree with you.
You told us previously that you don't have that data.
That's right.
They changed computer programs, and so if you recall, they, they don't have the data.
That's correct. We, we have data from prior, prior evaluation, but it's not usable. When the state changed from McCrayle to True North Logic, they actually changed the program over. When they changed the program over, the last year came in a usable amount of data that we can then compile into a spreadsheet or into a database. The years before that were, were done as a PDF file to save room, and it's not manageable, it's screenshots. So we could go through every single page, there's sixty-four per every teacher. For everybody, there's seventeen hundred people eligible, and try to, this, we can't do it. And most systems are not, even smaller systems, that's, it's just, the state timing on this was about as bad as it could be for the evaluation process, just frankly.
And I guess the comments, the thirteen, fourteen comments with the principal could address that.
That's right, that's right. And if, and we are looking at valuation through the three years, but it would only be as, as we stand on this on comparison of that twelve, thirteen school year. This is how we do it. This is a five standard evaluation sample. We went through this once before. We add up basically as a, as an F score, where we're looking at, at the numbers that fall within each of the standards, and then we divide it to, to get an average. We would do the same thing with people who have two standards, which is where they've been evaluated in a short term during the five years of their, of their career. So it depends upon where they are. Instructional support personnel will be established as a separate group. In other words, we're pulling the instructional support people out. Their evaluations are different, we'll make a comparison within that group and do basically the same thing, though their evaluations are all over the place as to where it is statistically. If there's an identical evaluation result between teachers and individual schools, the selection will be made by the same method that we described before, but now we're going into the standards. Each standards adds up to make the total. So what we would do is break it down into its elements. Next slide. This is an analysis of the elements. Here's you, you break down the standards going across, and we do the same thing statistically to come up with a score. This is for a teacher who only has two standards evaluated. Remember that during a five-year period, there are five standard evaluations and two standard evaluations. And so we divide by that number to get the arithmetic average. I don't like this word, I think it's, it's one of the greatest weaknesses in this entire plan is ties, because I don't think there's a very strong way of saying that a teacher who's a two-point-eight, as opposed to a teacher who's a two-point-seven-five, are, is a greater difference. But to do this plan, we have to have a way to break the ties. And we need a way to do it that's as best as we can create it as fair for the teachers as possible. So what we're doing is if, in the event, okay, let's say that we, we have a, a school of twenty-five teachers, and we have to pick twenty-five percent of that, and we do all the math that we just talked about on their standards. And the average was, the top one was two-point-eight, and it comes down, and they can only have five teachers who are in the twenty-five percent rule at that school. And the, when we get to number five, we have three teachers that are two-point-ones. So now we have a tie. Even though we've done the elements, we've done the standards, we've gone through all that, we now have a tie. And all the systems are facing this. How do we help the teach, the principal look at that set of teachers and make a tie? Or break the tie? I don't like the word tie, but that is the only word I know to describe where we are statistically at that point. So what we're saying is we would apply criteria one, and I'm going to go through the criteria. If it breaks the tie, then we don't go any further. If the classroom teachers are tied after applying criteria one, then the principal will proceed to criteria two and so on, and I'll go through the list of criteria. If the principal, if the particular tie breaking criteria is not applicable to all the teachers that are tied, we'll ignore that criteria and go to the next one. A, a good example would be EVOs scores. One of the things we're going to use is to look at EVOs scores. If we have three teachers that are tied, EVOs isn't done with all teachers. So we can't compare an EVOs score of one teacher against the other, so we would automatically go to the next criteria. The first criteria is whether the teacher has received any rating below accomplished on the two-thirteen, two-fourteen formal evaluation instrument. In other words, did they fall below that average? That would automatically rule that teacher out. Once again, we're splitting hairs here, and please understand that. This is the only way we know to fairly do this. The second criteria would be EVOs scores. That would be from the two-twelve, two-thirteen school year. And we, if the teachers in the tie all had EVOs scores to compare, we would use that as a comparison. And there's quite a bit of statistical variability in EVOs scores forward, so we're pretty sure that would be breaking the tie. Being named, the third one is being named Teacher of the Year at any school, and you can see the range from two thousand ten to two thousand thirteen school year. So then we're going to the Teacher of the Year. We're going with assumption that a, that a person chosen as Teacher of the Year is a strong teacher.
And for those that don't know, EVOs is a statistical analysis that's actually done through DPI and SAS to sort of rate teacher effectiveness based on a history of student test scores.
The fourth one is being a lead mentor at any of the schools or at that school for, for the same years, two thousand eleven to two thousand fourteen. We have mentors, and then we have lead mentors. The lead mentors are typically chosen because they're at a level where we want them to mentor the teachers, and they're often a train, the trainer model, to train the other mentors. So we're rating them somewhat higher. Serving as a chair of a school improvement team or a focus intervention team at any school during that range of years, two eleven through two fourteen. Once again, we're looking at a leadership skill here, someone who's taking on the leadership to be the chair of one of these important teams. Serving as a grade level chair, department chair at any school during the two, during that range, two eleven through two fourteen. Serving as a mentor, now we go to what we would call our mentors. Very important teachers do a great job, but we have a, a larger number of mentors in the school. Or they're a member of the sit or fit team. Once again, taking on a leadership role. Finally, if the teacher is tied at this point, the principal must break the tie based on an objective and documented reason related to the teacher's performance. At this point, if they're still tied, we're going to sit down and talk to the principal and go, what do you think, where do we think they are, and what decision, what, what criteria would you like to use at this point to try to break this tie? It can't be arbitrary and capricious. It's not going to be a coin toss, as has been done in some other counties. We will come up with some way to do it. Hopefully, we will not be in this situation, just frankly. I think by the time we move through the other seven criteria, we will have broken the tie.
It would seem a shame, though, if you have to go to eight criterias to break a tie, and then the one who's on the, these two, on the bubble, if you will, and doesn't get chosen, I mean, that really does.
That's where the, you know, I, I understand the, maybe the notion of this law, but when you, you try to break ties by these types of individual, i- it is a, it's a very frustrating thing. And I've done this thirty-six years. And two years ago, I, I was at Jackie School, talking to the teachers about the future, and we talked about the loss of tenure, and rightfully, how that was going to impact the profession of teaching. And I have to admit, little did we see or talk about the twenty-five percent rule or the impact that I think this could have. So it is, it is one of the most polarizing and, and difficult rules I've ever seen imposed in education. I'm not saying the idea is a bad one to recognize performance of great teachers, but we just didn't go about it.
Well, a lot of businesses have recognized performance and reward good performance without having some arbitrary and capricious number like twenty-five percent is the, is a magic number.
Now, we have done some preliminary looks at, at schools, and we don't anticipate many schools where we'd have to implement some kind of tie process.
Okay. Now, this is the just in case.
Well, I think that would be such a small number. I would, if you, if you have to go through eight steps at one or two people, I think, I think maybe locally, we could absorb that, yes, include that. Because you only talked about four years of, of additional.
That's right.
Well, it might only be one year, I mean, if it's even that, correct?
That's correct.
There's no funding included for more than this next year. So all this angst and gnashing of teeth could be for one year.
And that's why we've tried to make this really as simple a process as we can. It is a one-year, you identify them, and there's not another twenty-five percent in the law coming onboard next year. So we try to take as much of this in, I don't want to say automate the process, but make it as, as clean a process as we can.
What, how would you characterize the chatter in terms of the support for an alternate, you know, plan other than this?
We belong to a group called Large District Superintendents, and, and we have written numerous pieces to the state board and others about our concerns around twenty-five percent. Don met with those chairs in Greensboro. Statewide, there is a lot of concern about this twenty-five percent and, and how it ju, the, the, this, it goes back to what John said. Everyone thinks rewarding performance is, is great, but the methodology they've selected here couldn't have taken a, a good idea and made it any worse if they tried.
And I, I do believe you told me that there is some, some chatter about possibly give, making a, a local pool.
There, the alternative really would be, and I think what we would like to see is that, and we're, and sort of piggybacking on the tenure idea that we were talking about while going on policy, is that if the tenure changes to be more of a grandfather tenure, where teachers would move who currently have tenure, move through two thousand eighteen and continue in tenure, and the twenty-five percent rule isn't used to take those folks out of the mix, we would only look at those people coming up for tenure this year. There, you look at the performance of your top level, what we would call our fourth-year BTs, our beginning teachers, and give them that opportunity to have a four-year contract. The remainder of the teachers, we'd like to pull that money and look at the possibility of a performance-oriented supplement that goes to those tenure teachers. Not related to a twenty-five percent, but more to how much can we get to those top-level folks across the board.
Because let's say, this, the lawsuit's going to take probably several years. But let's say an injunction is filed that prevents us, prevents districts in the state from at least removing tenure until they complete the lawsuit. The question is, what does that do to this twenty-five percent? Because now you're sitting in an injunction. And if I'm a teacher, do I wait, do I, do I wait for the lawsuit to happen? At that point, this is a one-year piece, and it's going to get kind of murky over the next couple of months. That's the, probably the best way I can describe it. So we're going to continue to, the process piece, but you will not, the final names won't come until late in May, and hopefully, in the short session, they may have cleaned up some of this, or we have a better idea where we are with this, with this lawsuit.
This has to be done by when?
Well, we would announce, and at the May meeting, you would approve the list, and those teachers would, would have to agree to it by the end of June.
End of June, okay.
But I would like to ask Mr. Bullard a question. Not to put you on the spot, Mr. Bullard, but I go back to the law when it was changed with tenure concerning administrators, and just based upon that. Legally, how could this stand up? I guess because teachers are being treated entirely different.
The, the, the legal argument is whether or not tenure teachers have a vested property right.
Right.
And if so, can it be taken away from them by the legislature? And the argument in favor of doing that is that the legislature grants rights, and the legislature can take those rights away. The counterargument is, once the legislature grants, essentially makes a con, allows the local board to make a contract with a teacher, and the teacher accepts that in form of tenure, the legislature then can't come back later and say, we're taking that away from you when you've already agreed to it. Most of the legal commentators that I have read about have said that it's a pretty close legal case, that it's debated both ways, and there's, doesn't seem to be a overwhelming majority opinion among the experts in the field in constitutional law and education law as to which way the court will side. It seems to be a very close legal case, and it's probably going to be a split decision in the, ultimately, in the North Carolina Supreme Court, and whichever way the majority rules is going to settle it.
And the only case with precedent was a case where they went in and changed rules for state retirees, and the ruling was that, well, those retirees were hired under the, this set of assumptions. And you can't go in and change those assumptions. Anybody new coming onboard, you can change the rules for them. And that's really the only legal precedent out there that folks have to hang their hat on.
And that's basically what happened with the administrators, isn't it?
Principals did the same thing, didn't they? They, they kept their tenure.
That's it.
Well, but, but they never, the law never, when they eliminated principal tenure, they didn't go in and say, those principals who have it, lose it. What they said was, if you got it, you keep it, but all new ones, lose it.
Well, I mean, I think, and I think that, you know, that would be understandable for new hired teachers. But it would seem that based on the principals and based on state retirees, there's real precedent that that is a, that would be a property right that, that state legislature could not arbitrarily take away.
Yeah, and that's why this has gotten so murky, because, you know, Mr. Higgins, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but in general, if you considered something a property right, then you would have to provide someone something in consideration for that right, which goes along with paying teachers in that twenty-five percent to voluntarily relinquish their tenure. You'll be providing them with monetary compensation in lieu of a property right, which is why the legislature made this law so murky.
Two things about that, I mean, one, you got to voluntarily accept it.
Well, yeah, well, that's the point.
And the other thing is, there's a, you know, this is twenty-five percent, but there's, there's a lot of teachers who are going to be outside that twenty-five percent who have tenure, who are not going to get it, who would not get anything for it.
Correct, that's why this gets so murky. Because if you're among this top twenty-five percent, if you think that the court is going to hold tenure as a property right, you very well may determine it's not in your interest to accept this money.
Right, so you're not going to sell it.
Correct.
Which is, which is what they'd be doing. But again, just because you picked the twenty-five percent, doesn't mean that you have to, you have to accept. What happens, what happens if, if, you know, as we've gotten some of these petitions from some schools that says, you know, we're not doing it. We, we, we just, as, as a school, we've agreed, we're not going to do it. So what happens?
Well, I mean, I understand what they're saying, and I certainly appreciate what they're saying, but the law is, as it stands, that we have to offer our top twenty-five percent this.
Well, I understand we have to offer it, but they don't have to take it.
They do not have to take it, no.
Okay.
Then, then it's not accepted.
Right, if they don't take, it's twenty-five percent, it's not twenty-five percent, and then twenty-five plus one for each one who rejects it.
Right.
If, so if you're in that twenty-five percent and you reject it, that's it.
Okay.
So in reality, I would expect statewide, maybe twenty, thirty percent of that pool, of that twenty-five percent pool would accept the money. I mean, if I'm in my last, if I'm close to retirement, take the money. It, it, it's not going to make a, have a big impact on me necessarily in terms of, of tenure, because I've only got four years left until I, until I retire. And it'll, and it'll help the retirement. So if anybody's in that category, I think they would strongly consider it. But outside of that group, it's going to be hit or miss.
BT fours would look at it because it's giving them a four-year contract, and they don't know in two thousand eighteen where the contracts are going to go.
A BT four might, wouldn't have tenure because they didn't have it to, to get. So that group would be one that would be more inclined, I think, to say yes.
Well, and how, how would it work then, it, I mean, the very beginning? Well, and how, how would it work then, it, I mean, the very beginning, it says that, that, you know, the superintendent, you know, and you all will comprise the, or compile the list, we can accept and reject it, how can we substitute if they are not considered part of the twenty-five percent? Doesn't that violate everything that we've just done?
Well, the, the law is, is kind of, a, as Dr. Hickey said, a little murky here. When we make a, when the superintendent makes a recommendation to you, the superintendent's recommendation has to be based on teacher performance. But your decision can be based on any criteria. So we will base our recommendation to you on teacher performance. But you, as a board, on who you select or recommend, can be based on any criteria you see.
But you would have to have, we would have to have objective criteria.
The law says, and that, and that's the, another one of those quirks in this, the law's, you don't have a criteria to add or subtract from the list. But Wayne will tell you, I think, from a legal perspective, if you take somebody off the list and substitute somebody else, you need to have a good reason.
Right.
Your, your decision cannot be arbitrary, or, or capricious, or discriminatory. You'd have to have a valid documented reason as to why. For instance, you could consider seniority. It's not related to performance necessarily, just because you've worked a number of years, doesn't always mean you're the best. It could correlate, but not necessarily. The superintendent is not supposed to consider that because the statute tells him to consider only performance. Now, you, as the board, could consider seniority if you chose to. But if you're going to do that, you need to apply it across the board, not just pick one teacher and say, we're going to substitute you with an older, more experienced teacher. You would have to do that across the board in order to keep it from being an arbitrary action on your part.
Okay, thanks.
So I, my recommendation would be to accept the superintendent's recommendation and not try to substitute, because if you do, you're going to get into arguments that your action is arbitrary.
Right.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, thank you, Mr. Dr. Williams.
Quick on timeline, you'll actually approve this process next month, which is the March meeting. You'll get the list, a tentative list, John, are we giving them the tentative list in, John?
Yes, sir.
Are we giving them the tentative list in April for the May approval, so they have a month to review it?
We thought we would review it at the April meeting.
And then at May, you'll, you would approve it?
The clock could happen between now and May.
Well, not March, because the legislature's not meeting until, what, May fifteenth?
Yes, so we would have had our, so we may have to look at.
You can't both.
That's the reason I was wondering if, you know, maybe, it might be better to approve it in late May, I mean, if nothing else, maybe the legislature will come to their senses.
Oh, there's going to be some changes. Okay, item E, uh, twenty-fourteen fifteen, school district line adjustment, appendix U, Mr. Hance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. From time to time, uh, it becomes necessary to shift, uh, a study area boundary or a district line in order to avoid bisecting a residential area or a neighborhood. And as you can see here, uh, this is a current apartment complex that is, uh, has been built, and we have two study areas, one in one school district, this is, uh, College Park, and this one is, uh, Bradley Creek. And this down here is, uh, Winter Park. And you can see the line bisects it, this is a satellite photograph, and it just, it bisects it right here, the apartments have already been constructed. And what we're recommending, uh, is simply to shift the district line to right here and just move the study area in this manner to enclose or incorporate all of the apartment complex into one study area and into one, uh, school district. There are no students currently located, uh, elementary students currently located in the apartment complex. I believe there, back in this area, there are some, um, middle school students and a high school student. But, uh, no elementary school students are affected. This will not affect the middle school or the high school boundaries, it will only affect the elementary boundary, and this will all be placed into, uh, Bradley Creek's, um, attendance zone.
Should be the easiest re-district we ever do.
That's right.
No, there was one actually.
And as you, as you recall, these things come up from time to time because, uh, new construction comes on, and, uh, they'll wind, they'll wind up splitting it, just like you see here. Uh, the road was built out and extended, and boom, there it is. So, uh, that's what we're, that's what we're recommending.
And actually, this doesn't require approval per se, because there's no students involved, but it is, just wanted to bring it to you for information.
We just bring it to you for information, and we will change this, so it'll make it effective, uh, this next year. In case someone does move in here, they will go to, uh, the school with the remainder of the students in the complex.
Those, those complexes are pretty close to College Park.
They are.
I mean, uh, I do a good deal of running in that area, and, I mean, you, you basically be taking kids who could walk to College Park and placing them in Bradley Creek.
Both schools are completely overcrowded, so it really doesn't matter, no one's there now, so.
Well, I just wonder why we would not move them to College Park where they could essentially walk.
Well, since no elementary students were involved, this is an easier boundary line to make than going in and drawing one around here and around the property lines. And that's why we took the path of least resistance.
Well, I mean, if you went to that, wouldn't it, I don't know, where the property line, I mean, where the boundary line truly is over here, but, because you cut it off, but.
We would, what we would wind up doing would be drawing, would, coming in here and manually drawing, uh, drawing a line around the, uh, the backside of the property line.
Well, that's a subdivision of what's over here, isn't it? We've done that and go up Autumn Hill Hall.
We can do it either way.
I think, I think, uh, Dr. Hickey makes a legitimate point, I mean, it's, uh, if, if you've talk, if you're not talking about any students, I mean.
So no students there, we can do it, we can do it either way, we can, we can go in here and manually, manually draw it around.
Crowded, so.
Well, but the, we, we do have in the bond, do we not, to, to possibly put some mobile units at Bradley Creek, so there's more possibility for expansion?
There is.
So if there were students, I mean, we're talking about non-existent students walking, I may understand your point, but it seems like we have more possibility, going back to what you said earlier. I think the infrastructure of Bradley Creek can handle a few more students more readily than College Park, also considering with the bond, if we get the bond, we're tearing College Park down.
That's correct.
So, I mean, I, I, I don't have a strong feeling either way, because we're talking about no students, but, um.
I don't know, I have a preference, only because, I, when I grew up, I lived two blocks away from the elementary school I attended. And, uh, it, it was great being able to walk to school, and we have all these initiatives, you know, safer ways to school, and, you know, healthiness and that, to get children out, biking and walking. And, uh, I don't know why we wouldn't take advantage of that, besides the fact that there's so many walking paths in that area that already exist that allow children safely to walk to school, why we would then decide to put them on buses and bus them across town? That's my perspective.
What is the distance, because I, I, uh, you know, me and my little circles, uh, what, what is the distance that this group would be safe from College Park versus Bradley Creek?
I don't know, I don't have the distance, but I can find out.
But they would be considered walking students if they went through that?
I don't know, they would have to be within the walk, they would have to be within the, within the walk zone. Right, they'd have to be within the walk zone, or they wouldn't be, or we would send bus anyway, if they're not within the walk zone.
Are, are these apartment complexes fully built out? Are they, are they completely occupied?
I don't know if they're completely occupied with, uh, with residents, but they are, they're, they are constructed.
We can get the distances, this is, there aren't any kids involved, so it's not a today issue, and we can relook at this next month.
Was this cabinet, what, you say, two miles?
No, it's one mile, isn't it?
It's a mile, mile and a half.
As long as you live within one mile, we don't provide transportation.
We don't have to provide.
Unless it is a dangerous area, and it would be more safe for us to carry the children by bus.
Yeah, the cross market street, we pick your transport.
Well, I mean, Ray Sean's not on this map, so.
We can find out the distances, and we can come back and we can, we can show you an alternative, uh, with it going to College Park. We can show you the distances between Bradley Creek and College Park, we can do all of that, and since no students are involved, we can bring it back and show it to all the two. I believe it's Headwaters at, um, Autumn Hall. Headwaters at Autumn Hall.
Well, that's near off Eastwood, that, uh.
And the rest of Autumn Hall goes, would be going to College Park, wouldn't they? Isn't there more of Autumn Hall on up, uh?
There, there is, I don't know if the entire development is going there because the, the line.
It's probably close per mile, you've got that crossing trail.
It's close to it.
Runs right behind it, where you can walk on that crossing trail and end up on, what street is that? Probably close per mile, somewhere around that.
Yeah. We can get the exact, we can get it, the distance for you, and then we can tell you, you know, if there's a major thoroughfare, like, you know, like, we're not going to allow elementary students to walk across Oleander in order to get to the school, we're going to send a bus for them. So, uh, you know, if there's something like that, that, in a way, we can let you know.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hance.
All right, next up is our budget recommendation. First of all, we had three board members who worked on our budget subcommittee chaired by Mr. Higgins. Now, I'll ask Mr. Higgins if there's anything he wants to say before we roll into the presentation.
Well, I would simply like to say that, uh, I think the members of the committee made some very good input, uh, raised some very good questions. I think, uh, we brought up some things to Mary Hazel to make sure they were addressed. Things that maybe did not make a whole lot of sense, or we needed further explanation. We were able to bring that to her attention so that when she come, comes tonight, a lot of those things ought to be already included, I hope, within her presentation. So I think, you know, it was kind of a weeding out process.
And we've had, we had input from principals, we solicited input from teachers as part of our teacher advisory committee, and, and that factored into this as well. We had principals who served on the committee, Mr. O'Brien who's here was one of the folks who served on that committee, Ms. Jethro who was here earlier, and then Ms. DeSharm from Trash were principals who served on that committee. Mary Hazel and I would sort of go back and forth, if we go too fast, throw something at us and we'll slow down.
The, um, main topics that we're going to cover, just a very brief overview of the current budget, just to give you some perspective. A short discussion on revenue estimates, um, a review of the budget, budget goals the board approved in the fall as we began this process, and then moving into the superintendent's recommendations, which at this point are probably the budget committee's recommendations, because they, um, agreed on some changes at the last meeting. Just a review of our beginning budget by source, you can see, and this includes, um, all funds. The majority of our funding comes from the state, fifty-six percent, with, um, twenty-nine percent from county and nine percent from federal, and then a few other smaller sources. The, um, by fund, this is just the operating budget, this doesn't include capital or child nutrition. But you can see our beginning budget was two eighteen, because there's always some adjustments to state funding and, um, amendments the board approves for carryover, that type of thing. So our current amended budget is currently two hundred and twenty-five million. At this point, in terms of, of, of estimating the state and federal, we don't have any, any planning, um, numbers from them yet. But we expect, because we're in the second year of the state budget, that the formulas would stay constant. So, so we're pretty much planning for, for stable state and federal allotments. Currently, the, the budget by purpose is with seventy-one percent of our budget, um, going towards instructional programs, twenty-one percent for support, five percent for ancillary, which most of that is child nutrition, um, and then three percent for mon, non-programmed charges, and once again, that was the beginning budget. So at this point, we don't have as much in non-program, non-program are things like indirect cost, or if we have any federal budgets that are, are unbudgeted at the beginning of the year, but at this point, most of that is budget.
And how does that compare, because, you know, we're constantly hearing the amount of money we put in the classroom, that seventy-one percent, how does that compare to, say, to other systems and, and their budgets?
My guess is that it's probably pretty high when you, especially when you look at, um, you know, if you do the same chart by fund, which we did, you know, as part of, with the committee, um, most of the state money is more instructional. A lot of the, the local money, um, provides things, maintenance, utilities, operational, but we also are fortunate in this county to have quite a bit of local money that also goes to instruction. Other counties don't have that, so that bumps our number up.
What, uh, services are considered ancillary services, and what services are considered supporting services?
Ancillary are, are, generally, that is just child nutrition. Um, there, there could be some community, um, ser, community service, if we had grants, it was not really, um, providing a, a K-12 instructional service, sometimes some of those small grants might be ancillary, but, but most of the time, it's just child nutrition.
More service is going to be transportation, maintenance, those kinds of operations.
Anything that is not classroom-based, you know, anything that's school-based and in the classroom is what that seventy-one percent is about.
Why do we make a differentiation between ancillary and support? Because couldn't child nutrition just as easily be support?
But they're self, they're, they're a, what's a, called enterprise fund.
Yeah.
So they're raising their own money and spending their own money, so they're, they're sort of separate, uh, in terms of that piece, they're, they're a self-sustaining operation.
And those definitions are, are state-determined, but they're very consistent with, with, um, the definitions nationally.
Thank you.
The budget goals the board approved, um, were to en, improve or increase teacher supplements, continuing providing support for academically and intellectually gifted students, maintaining arts funding, technology, EC, and safety and security. So those were the top priorities of the board in the fall.
Do you, do you have a figure in mind as far as the increase in the teacher supplements?
We're going to go.
We're going to get to that, and, and normally, when we do this, when we give you a hard number, we're going to work off a range this time, because, uh, first of all, this is the first time I can remember, as long as I've been a superintendent of the state, that I haven't had a state, some kind of state planning allotment to work off of. It has been delayed this year longer than it's ever been delayed. You've got a, a, uh, teacher supplement increase, our teacher pay raise increased, but only for zero to five. But the expectation is they're going to come back and make some kind of recommendation for those other teachers, maybe not as large. So, you, when you start seeing some of the range here, it's really around that teacher piece. And I wish our teacher folks had had states so they could see this. Our budget recommendation is trying to make sure that we get some, we get a raise for all of our teachers, but we're working on a sliding scale depending upon what that, what the state ends up doing in the long run. So we hear the teachers and what they were talking about, but I, they need to be talking to those legislators as well in making sure that they hear it as, as, just as, more so in some respects than us.
As Dr. Barkley mentioned, we're still waiting on the, the state and federal planning allotments. As soon as we actually receive the student projections, we'll be able to move forward with our planning, because we, we don't expect the formulas to change. From just discussions with county staff, you know, it's really early in their process too, but we are, um, estimating for purposes of this plan, a, a five percent operating increase from, from the county, which would be three point two million, and a ten percent increase for capital, which brings the, um, I think their goal is to get to three million, but to get to two point seven five oh this year. Moving into formula, um, changes, the, the biggest change that happened last year with the state budget was a reduction in our, um, the, the teacher formula, which was an increase in class size. And what, and because that happened so late in the process, you'll remember, the budget was approved after we had, um, already allocated our teacher positions and hired positions for the new year, so the board, um, made the decision to appropriate fund balance to get us through this year. So even though many counties have already had the reduction of teachers, teaching positions, um, for, for us, it'll come next year. So part of what we had to do was change our local formulas, because we have some local positions in addition to state, our local formulas are already better than state's, but then we have to, you know, when, when that base, uh, number of teachers goes down, we have to adjust our formulas too, so I'm going to, to explain that to you, and also the, the teacher assistant formula, which is much easier to discuss. You can see on the.
Next slide.
Next slide. The, I mentioned the held harmless, um, the actual state formulas increase class size from one to two point four, depending on the grade, which is basically the same thing that we're doing. The, um, chart here shows, okay, from, from K through twelfth grade, you can see by grade what the, the proposed formula increase. No change for kindergarten, grades one through eight, to increase it by one, and grades, um, nine through twelve, between two and two point four. And that is where most of the, the local teachers already were, so that was the decision to make that, that larger increase in the upper grades.
And this, that is still a better, uh, ratio than the state?
The other thing we looked at was, um, we, we got feedback from all the schools and all the principals about, you know, what their budget wishes were. There were, there were a lot of things that totaled, what was it, about eleven million dollars, and we certainly couldn't, couldn't bring all those to you. But one of the things they asked for was more flexibility. If you recall, in, in past years, the teacher formula, there used to be class size, um, average and maximum in all grades, and then when the budget. And then when the budget got so tight over the last few years, we only have a class size maximum in K-three. So grades four and above, that's a local decision what the class sizes are. So one of the things that the, um, elementary principals were asking for was the ability to use the teachers, to have more flexibility in how they use teachers. So we, there isn't a whole lot of flexibility up through third grade, but there's a little bit in four and five. So we've always funded, um, art, music, and PE with the difference between the average and the state formula. And so, um, that's why sometimes you would hear the class size is one to eighteen, but it's really one to twenty-one because we also, you know, we use those same state positions to fund art, music, and PE, and it was sort of a mandate. One of the things they wanted this year was to also have that same requirement for, um, they, they wanted additional instructional coach, but if that wasn't possible, was there any way to do it with our current positions? And there was enough room in that formula, um, that funds art, music, and PE to also fund the instructional coaches. They didn't really know they had the flexibility. So by just explaining the formula different, we are saying to them, it's an expectation that they have an instructional coach. Then for all the schools who have Title I money that may have already been using it for instructional coaches, they can use that money for class size reduction or some, some other need at the school. So it was just sort of changing. Where instructional coaches kind of grew out of a Title I initiative. Now it's something that's needed in every school, so we wanted to make it part of our, our base formulas. And then, um, and this doesn't cost anything, it's just using the positions we have differently. And then anything above that would be Title I. I know it's a little confusing, but this just shows you the difference between the, the proposed formula, that differential of how we fund, already funded art, music, and PE, and there's enough room in there to also fund instructional coaches. And for our largest four to five schools, they actually earn five positions with that differential and they could, they could use that fifth position any way they want it, either as a classroom teacher or as an additional coach. That's more about the same thing and, and how we would then use the Title I, um, money at, at those schools. Or before we move past this, this is probably the most confusing part of the presentation. Are there any questions about the formula recommendation?
The idea here is what we've done is taken the formulas and given the schools more flexibility in how they can use their positions. It doesn't add teachers, but it does give schools a little more, uh, sight base in terms of how they can use some of those positions.
And secondary schools already had that and already had that understanding, so we didn't really have to do the same thing there to give them that same flexibility. Next is teacher assistants. Teacher assistants are not allocated, um, on a class size formula. It's a dollar amount per, um, ADM and so that dollar amount's increasing. And so what it, it used to fund one to twenty-one K-one and with the new formula, it will fund one to twenty-three K-one. So we're losing about twenty-two teacher assistants. And so through, is the same as we were planning with teachers, through attrition over this last year, as folks retire, we, we won't be filling positions and, um, we'll, we'll adjust those formulas. But we're not doing a reduction for, so it's all through attrition.
Now, you hear that, now, we allocate based on number of K-one students, but a teacher assistant a day doesn't stay in simply a K-class or, or a first-grade class. They're literally used all over the building. I was in one school this morning, they were talking about how in the mornings, their assistants are up there working with fifth graders on an intervention piece before they go back into the kindergarten class because the teacher's doing some whole group pieces with that. Our teacher assistants have come a long way from what folks might think of as those who might have graded papers and done a lot of paperwork. They are really true instructional assistants and they are really a valuable tool in that instructional program at the entire school.
Then we got into, you know, after, after we dealt with the, the state formula issue, um, basically what became the ad list. What are the, what were the things that we have to do because, um, the costs are gonna go up no matter what? We know that our, um, insurance is going up for, the cost for health insurance, property insurance. We have already documented that our utility are gonna go up, um, just based on the increased enrollment for charter schools, the payments that we share with them, the cost has gone up. We had, we'd already dealt with part of that in the budget, but it went up a little bit last year. It went up more than, than I had anticipated. So we're about a hundred thousand dollars short. So those are kind of at the top of the list of the things that are gonna happen, whether we get any more money or not. So we wanted to bring those to your attention.
We're gonna, we're gonna pay those costs whether we want to or not.
Then we get into the, the pay options. Dr. Markley mentioned a little bit about that before, but the, the original goal was to try to have a, a, um, at least a three percent increase, um, using a combination of state and local funding for teachers. So depending on what happened with the state, that may or may not be possible. But I wanna go through each of those scenarios with you. They range, um, quite a bit in cost. If you just look at teacher supplement and, teacher supplements are completely locally funded. The cost of every percent and our, our current supplements are at eight percent. So there's a state salary and then eight percent local supplement. To increase that by one percentage point is nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The governor's plan is to, to, to raise the beginning level for teachers. And, uh, some of the teachers that spoke tonight talked about how the bottom of the scale is flat. So, you know, we haven't had a step increase in five years, five or six years. And so everyone that, from zero to five are at the same pay, pay level. So the, his recommendation is in the first year to bring that, um, beginning teacher pay from thirty thousand eight hundred dollars to thirty-three thousand. So all those at the bottom would increase to thirty-three thousand and that will result in either a four, between four and seven percent raise for those teachers. Um, and those are all the teachers at steps zero through seven. His second phase of the plan, which would be in the second year, would bring those same teachers up to thirty-five thousand, but then we're gonna grab a couple more step, steps on the pay scale. And that would result in a, between a two and a six percent rate. So if that happens, there is still a local cost to that because we have, if you remember, most of our, um, locally paid teachers are the teachers that are at the, the bottom of the pay scale. So the biggest hit of this particular plan is to our local budget. So that's, that's part of what we're costing out for you.
We're estimating that to be about seven hundred and fifty thousand.
The, um, so the, the different options we're gonna go, present to you range from four hundred and twenty to two point, almost two point five million dollars. And options was the word we chose, but really it's different scenarios that we are anticipating. We, we don't really know what's gonna happen. As soon as there's a state budget, we'll bring back the final recommendation to you. But that's sort of the range and we wanted to make sure that we explained to the kind of commissioners in our request, you know, we're not really sure the cost of, of this. And then for locally, other locally paid staff, the, the original recommendation from DPI was to rec, to, to budget at least a three percent raise for everyone, you know, in anticipation of the state budget. It's really early to know if that's right, so we, we estimated just a cost of living raise of three percent for the, for the non-teachers. The first option is to, the governor's plan and then a two percent supplement for all the teachers beyond step seven. So I, I think I, I mentioned that those, zero to seven would get between four and seven percent and then all the other teachers would get a two percent local supplement. The cost of that would be two point, two million, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And that's the most expensive plan. So the governor simply increase, only gives a raise to those early folks and we wanted to take care of everyone else, it would cost us two and a half million.
And then we'd, we'd have a staggered supplement based on years of experience. Years ago, that's how the supplement scale was. We had, it was banded and we had maybe seven different levels. And then we, we eventually got it where everyone was at the same level. Option B is the governor's plan, then a two percent, um, cost of living increase for all teachers. That's assuming the state also does that. And then that would save us money because locally, we would only have to do a one percent supplement increase to get to that same goal. The third option was if the state did a one percent cost of living increase for all teachers and then we went back to our plan of the two percent supplement. And then option D would be if the state did three percent for everybody and we wouldn't do the local supplement increase and that, that would save the most money. So those are sort of different possibilities and then we'll just follow the process and, and see what happens.
Excuse me, the one percent cost of living increase, is that a permanent increase or temporary?
Just estimating what the state might do. And they usually, when they do a cost of living increase, all the ranges go up and it's, and it's permanent. Um, they have had years where people at the top of the scale, they gave a bonus to, but generally they're, they're moving the whole scale up. The, um, position recommendations, um, I don't know if you want me to go through this whole list.
First one up is kindergarten center. We're gonna talk about that shortly in terms of reopening the College Road, uh, what would be the early, early childhood center. That's gonna be to relieve primarily overcrowding at Bellamy. We'd move the kindergarten and we'd move two classes over from Mary C. Williams. It's gonna requ, the state will provide some positions as a school. The allotment of teachers will cover that. So above our, what, what we would normally get, we'll need two custodians and one support associate. In special education, additional psychologist. As we slowly transition from the old RTI process to, to, uh, some other processes, in order to get the testing done, we need an additional psychologist. At the high school, go back to one of the original goals, AIG. We wanna add a halftime AIG person at each of our high schools. Same way with our dedicated teachers for signature programs. Those, a lot of those are targeting some of our AIG kids. So, and keeping in line with those board goals. Student support, power school. We, when, when the budget went bad several years ago, we eliminated a position out of Dr. Holliday's shop to, that did a lot of the student service piece. With the addition of power school and a lot of different reporting requirements, we'd like to add that position back. So it's not a new position, it's a restoration position. Dr. Holliday, anything you wanna add about that particular position?
Thank you, Dr. Markley. This position, uh, right now I have the, the power school coordinator for the district and one assistant. And that supports all of forty-four of our campuses. And, um, when we lost that position, like Dr. Markley said, several, a few years ago, those two ladies plus anybody else in my shop that can help out will do that. And we really need that additional support, especially with power school. So adding that assistant back would be a great assistance to all of our schools because most of the time these ladies spend their time in their schools helping data managers get things up and running.
Uh, and finally, the position recommendations. We're growing our virtual program at the middle schools. We've got a couple of schools in particular, Roland-Greys and Noble, that could use a full-time person to help manage that. Right now, they're pulling teachers in on their planning periods and they're doing some of the management piece on that. And then some of our other schools are getting there, but they're not ready for a full-time person. So we could share one position that, to help sort of, to support those other schools. Next slide. Then our other school-based needs, the modified calendar for Lake Forest, the fifty-four thousand dollars to handle the additional school days. We, we'd like to extend the month of employment for EC chairs in the summertime to help them with transition of kids coming into schools, making sure IEPs are in place. We think that's critical to really getting those students ready when they walk into our schools. And then extra duty pay, we wanna revise some of the supplements around extra duty pay. And, because they had not, in fact, we cut those and this is basically a restoration, a little bit of some of those extra duty pays. Instructional services, we do science kits, we have to refurbish those science kits. We'd like to have some new AIG materials to align to the new standards. Increase in school arts allotments, that would help things like bands with the uniforms, with, with equipment replacement and some other supply lines. Instructional software, M-Class renewal is a tool that we use for diagnosis and, uh, and data for some of our students. High school science textbook, the state is no longer, is, is requiring us to move to more digital textbooks. We've done this at the elementary levels, middle school, and this is our next phase, moving into the high school level. More for the arts program, band repair replacements, competitions, restore funding for some of the math, science, and band competitions. Increase AIG certification support. We're having trouble sometimes finding an AIG certified person to come in some of these AIG positions. So we wanna be able to, uh, provide some more of that professional development to get more teachers AIG certified. Human resources, uh, we're bringing online a new volunteer program that we've talked about in the past. We're also increasing some of the software that when you check in as a volunteer, you show your license, it'll do an automatic instant background check. So we're requesting thirteen thousand dollars to cover some of those expenses. One of the things we saw, can you? Increase our human resource and professional development covered by Title II, uh, not covered by Title II grants. We brought Wayne on board, we gotta give him a little bit of a supply line, so that's thirty-six hundred. Technology, these are not, the first one is really not a cost, but it'll show up in the budget. We've got some savings in our technology budget and we're gonna use that to provide an NCBPS technician district-wide. That's high school, middle school, summer school kind of position. And then also, we're gonna purchase Identikit for all schools, so that, that's a check-in system. If you come into a school and you're gonna check in, it's a volunteer system and it's the one that requires your license to go in and scan and it'll do a sex offender check, which will become sort of our level one volunteer check. Uh, and that's the budget. Oh, excuse me.
Just to, to mention that some of the items that were included, um, that we discussed were continuing items and some of them are one-time expenditures. Just to, to mention the one-time items that we request, that we take out of fund balance to, to contract, to expand, well, not to expand, to finally complete the scanning of our electronic records. We've been trying to fund that a little bit along for several years, but that, this would give us the funding to complete that.
Is that all those records stored over at Lakeside in that room? Is that what that is, Ms. Hance?
Those, Lakeside's already been done. These are the remained, we have, we have them, they're stored everywhere. They're in the Pebble buildings out here, they're over in the child nutrition warehouse, they're everywhere. This is to take care of all of those and then we have to go to the schools and start downloading some more.
But it's like those that were stored over there in that room?
Yes, it's those that are stored there.
Additional funding to continue, we, we keep bringing this back as a one-time request, as we're hopeful of a bond. But, um, the, the plan would be that this position could be restored to bond funding, um, to manage the, the bond projects, um, next year. The, um, we changed the, the technology process a little bit for, and we didn't allow people to, schools to do individual school requests because when you get to the technology part of the budget, you, you'll see that we were trying to implement your system-wide technology plan. But testing needed a new scanner to support some of the new testing requirements, so we needed to add that in. Also wanted to do some workshops that are gonna be offered for school treasures. This is a new program. It had been offered for finance staff, but it's, it's a new state program to, to give for a very small price, two hundred and fifty dollars for forty hours of training for our school treasures over, over time. So we wanted to try to, to implement that initiative. The actual facility-related costs to reopen, um, College Road, Early Childhood Center, which also includes technology. And then, um, a trans.
May I ask a question about that, Mr. Hance? Since this was used as a kindergarten school previously, why are we having to spend three hundred and sixty thousand? What's that covering?
A lot of, a lot of it is technology and there's some other things with the, with, that we're, um, doing in there with HVAC. We're painting some, getting it back up to speed, you know, painting it and things like that. But a large part of that is, uh, is technology.
And some of it is furniture because the.
Some is furniture because we're bringing, uh, they had their furniture, we're having to use, they had their own furniture. We're having to put, uh, some child nutrition equipment back in there that we, uh, that, um, Ms. Smith, uh, repurposed and it's gone, so we're having to put that back in there. So, um, and we're having to do furniture because we're bringing it over to kindergarten, so we have to do that. We're bringing their furniture with them, but, uh, we've got to also place, uh, some upper-grade furniture back at, uh, Bellamy in order to accommodate this growth in the student body that's, uh, that's occurring there.
And two of these rooms would be pre-K, so there's usually some, there's usually some, uh, pre-K has its, some of the craziest set of requirements you've ever seen for what, what a room looks like. And so there's some costs associated with that as well.
And the last slide, which is the largest, is, um, a cap, appropriation to transfer to capital outlay to support our highest priority capital needs. Um, we, we estimated revenue sources for capital, but that was the amount we were short.
And remember with our fund balance, we have a, a policy goal of eight percent. Uh, this will not put us below our, our, our established goal in relation to fund balance.
We, we also have a, a fund balance with our Medicaid funding that we usually only use towards nurses. But one of the things that we wanted to use it for this year, um, is to, um, add a instructional services response to instruction specialist. We call it RTI, but, um, it was recommended that we, we spell it all, all the way out. And that will support our transition from a four-tiered to a three-tiered, um, process in the district. That's not something that can be funded from EC funding, but when the Medicaid revenue comes back to us, it's your decision how that money is spent. Currently, it's only for nurses, so with your approval, we could make this change. The next slide is a summary of capital outlay. The priority requests were fifteen point nine million. Our estimated revenue, including that fund balance, is a little over, well, seven point two million. The handouts that are attached to this presentation for you include a, a capital outlay summary, project, real specific project listings for facilities, technology, and vehicles. And they, they show priorities for, um, this year as, as well as next year because the county asked that we, we submit capital for, with a two-year plan. So that's the reason there's two years of that. We've even got some past the second year just because we wanted to let them know about the need. Won't go through the, the whole capital list, but I just wanted you to see, um, the different capital outlay revenue sources that we were looking at. And then, um, the, the summary list there is four, almost four point eight million for repairs and renovations, a hundred and ninety-six thousand for furniture and equipment, two hundred and three thousand for vehicles, and two million for technology. And then there's a detailed list. In terms of the entire, you know, we've talked a lot about the budget proposal and the state estimates. estimates, but this is the amount of all these items that would be added to the county request. Our current county operating appropriation is $64,740,000. This, I think I said earlier, we were expecting an increase of about 3.2 because of the salary issues. We're asking for a little bit more, 6.9%.
But that could be cut if the governor's-
Yeah, once we know, once we know what the state's going to do with everybody's salary, we can fine-tune that number. And this is, like I said, this is the first time, I mean, I've done budgets in North Carolina now for almost a decade, this is the first time that I haven't been able to give you a definite hard number in terms of at least a starting point on salaries.
And if we're at the low end of that range that we presented, it would be in line with our county estimate. Also, the capital outlay request of $2.7 million I mentioned for a total county request of almost $72 million. The next slide just shows that on a per pupil basis, so where the dollar amount is going up 5% with the enrollment changes, it would be a 4% increase. Would still not get us up to where we were in '08, '09 per pupil, but we're starting to move back in that direction. At this point, I'll just be glad to answer any questions you have, and like I said, there's a lot of supporting documentation for your review.
Anything from the other folks in the budget committee?
Any comments, questions, because I see the budget is, committee is, let's see, Mr. Higgins, Ms. Cogle, Dr. Higgins?
I think I see Steph was there, I think, of most.
Well, we appreciate the hard work.
This will be brought back for your approval next one.
Okay, item nine.
Excuse me.
Consensus items, item A, personnel, opinion C, Dr. Wilmers.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Request the board approve the personnel matters as presented.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, approved. Item B, budget amendments, your hands in the floor.
Request the board's approval?
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, approved. Item 10, under old business, item A, policies for second reading, Mrs. Nichols.
And this was the 6450, the grievance procedure for employees that Dr. Wilmers presented, and we discussed in detail for first reading. Now, we're asking for approval for this revision. And remember, it was for the updates, just to improve the current guidelines and provide better detail and support information.
So you're moving for approval?
Yes, it's for second reading.
Sure, okay, so you're moving for approval.
Yes.
I'll second.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Do we have a motion in this slide, but any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, approved. Item B, revised membership of the advisory council for exceptional students, opinion C, Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We need to replace some inactive members to get our council up to our, close to our limit, so I ask that you please approve this addition to our advisory council.
Move for approval?
Second.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, approved. Thank you.
Let's take a break.
Okay.
I guess what's this come-
Been requested because these others we'll go through rather quickly. Another short five-minute break.